Welcome, everybody, to the March 20th, 2012 City Council Meeting. Ms. Cox, would you please take the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Punt?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tabke?
Here.
I'll stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we move on to item number three. Recognition of retiring City Clerk Judy Cox. I've known Judy since I started doing city work here, which was nowhere near as long as many people up at this table and in the audience tonight. And Judy has been a phenomenal resource and one of the nicest people I have ever met in a wealth of information as to everything that goes on in the city. And I just want to wish her the best of luck in retirement. And thank you very much for everything that you've done for the city. And it's been wonderful, 41 years. I wasn't alive for a lot of that, but... (laughter) Thank you very much for your service to the city. Thank you, Judy. And Mark has some things.
Judy, would you join me, please?
Mr. Mayor and counselors and members of the public, it is with a great deal of joy and a great deal of sadness that I'm here before you tonight. Joy in that someone as wonderful and knowledgeable and dedicated as is Judy has reached a point in her life that she can retire, and sadness for the same reason. We're going to miss her a great deal. It's my honor to read a resolution, which is currently on the consent agenda, so I might suggest that we need a motion to have it removed from consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you for that. This is Resolution Number 7181, a resolution of appreciation to Judith S. Cox. Whereas Judith S. Cox was hired by the City of Shakopee as typist receptionist on July 16th, 1970, and subsequently promoted to deputy city clerk in 1976 into the position of city clerk in 1981. And whereas during her more than 41 years of service to the city, Judy has worked for 10 different mayors and seven city administrators. And whereas she has been part of the city's growth from less than 7,000 to more than 37,000 residents and has seen the physical area of the city grow by nearly eightfold. And whereas during her years of service, Judy has helped to train newly elected officials in the intricacies of government. And whereas Judy oversaw elections in Shakopee and worked with countless election judges and officials in the city and with Scott County over the years. And whereas Judy has been a thoughtful and supportive colleague to city staff at all levels and in all departments. And whereas Judy has provided a wealth of community and history on a daily basis which will be impossible to ever replace. And whereas Judy's more than 41 years of dedicated service to Shakopee has helped to shape it into the city that it has become. And whereas Judy has chosen to retire and will enter employment with the City of Shakopee on March 30th, 2012. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Shakopee, Minnesota, that it hereby extends its congratulations to Judith S. Cox on this occasion of her retirement. Be it further resolved that on behalf of the elected officials, staff, and residents of Shakopee, we extend to her our gratitude for having made Shakopee a better place in which to live and work. Adopted this regular session of the City Council of the City of Shakopee, Minnesota this 20th day of March 2012. A motion and a second would be in order to adopt this resolution. Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Clay?
Move Resolution Number 7181, a resolution of appreciation to Judith S. Cox.
Ms. Lehman?
I'll second it. I got a question. Mayor, if we made a motion to table this for nine years, we could make it an even 50. You'd be interested in that motion.
Two more presidential elections.
I guess we'll have to resort to the duct tape to the chair.
Thank you, but no thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously.
Congratulations, Judy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience, and especially citizens at home, I want to thank you all for this evening. It has been a very hard decision for me to come to retiring, as many of my coworkers and especially my family members know. One spends a lot of their time in their workplace, actually, half of their waking hours. And you get to know a lot of people and learn a lot, and it's going to be, it's been a very difficult time for me to come to the conclusion that it's time for me to retire. I feel very blessed with having worked for so many council members and mayors, administrators, and coworkers, and especially being able to answer and help questions of the public as they came in, and be able to at least try and guide them in the right direction if we are, were unable to actually answer their questions. I've learned a lot. I've enjoyed my position. I've enjoyed what I've worked, my work, which is why I really stayed. I like serving the public. As I look back on the 41 years that I've spent here, if I had to do it again, I would make no changes. I would continue to do it. I really feel blessed, and I enjoyed my 41 years, and I would do it all again. I will miss everyone, but I know that it is time for me to move on. It's time to retire, and I thank everyone for the opportunities that I've had while working for this great community and serving the great people that we have. Thank you.
Does anybody else up here have anything you'd like to say? All right.
Mayor, what can you possibly say?
Nothing. The city's never going to be the same.
Tire to the chair.
All right. Moving on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Mr. McNeil?
Mr. Mayor, we do have an addition, 11B1, which would be a request for provisional civil service appointment. That's on your table. And we also have a correction to the resolution regarding the appointment of the city clerk. That's 5B4.
All right. She's getting in the middle of time to get outside about that. All right, is there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Ms. Lehman?
Let's just read B4 and decide if it can be in consent.
Actually, I was going to ask to remove it.
Okay. Let's cure that one.
All right. We get to that during consent stuff, right? Yeah. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? We'll get to the removing consent in a bit. Entertainer motion? Ms. Lehman?
Remove the consent agenda, removing 5B...
No, no.
Okay. Approval of the agenda. I'm ahead of myself.
Yep.
How about that? Do we have a second? Standing by Counsel Clay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you much. Item number five, consent business. Is there any, are there any items that would like to be removed from consent? All right, let's start with Counsel Clay, because he already said one.
Yeah, I would like to remove 5B4 for just a quick bit of discussion.
All right. Counsel Whiting?
5F4.
Ms. Lehman?
Last chance, we could take 5B1 off and not let her retire.
It's done. It's already done.
That's already done.
Darn, darn, darn.
Sorry, I was late. Thanks for everything.
Thank you so much, Your Honor.
All right, is that it? So we've got 5B4 and 5F4. All right, do we have a motion? Counsel Lehman?
Well, the consent agenda is modified.
Second.
Standing by Counsel Whiting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We have to read them first.
We're all ahead of ourselves tonight.
All right. We'll do a do-over.
Okay. Sorry.
5A1, A2 and A3 adopt resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement forbids for the 2012 Batuminas overlay project number 2012-1, the 2012 Verling Drive Batuminas overlay project 2012-2, and the Main Street Utilities Improvement Project number 2012-5. 5A4 adopts resolution receiving report and calling for public hearing for the Valley View Improvements from Evergreen Lane to Sarazin Street project number 2012-7. 5A5 approves a lighting system comprised of aluminum poles and halophane luminaires for lighting along First Avenue as part of the County Road 69 project. 5A6 approves a special lighting distance from County Road 69 on County Road 69 from 10th Avenue to Fuller Street, including lights by the railroad bridges and the installation of a new underground transformer for a new lighting system at an estimated cost of $2,000. 5B1 was acted upon previously. 5B2, except with regret, the resignation of police records technician Jennifer Boudreaux effective April 6, 2012. 5B3 authorizes correction of the starting wage at grade four Step B of the 2012 Non-Union Pay Plan for Carmella Nussein in her position as Engineering Secretary effective February 27, 2012. 5B4 was removed from consent agenda. 5B5 authorize the staff to advertise foreign, begin the selection process for an engineering technician. 5D1 and 5D2 declares equipment, including a snowmobile, snowmobile trailer, miscellaneous snowmobiling equipment, and bicycles held by the Shakopee Police Department to be surplus property and authorizes proper disposal. 5F1 authorizes bills and pass-throughs to be paid in amount totaling $1,422,912, no cents. 5F2 approves minutes of the February 21st, 2012 City Council meeting. 5F3 approves an application and grants a temporary on-sale liquor license to the Minnesota Farm Winery Association for April 14th, 2012 at Canterbury Park, 1100 Canterbury Road. And 5F4 was removed from consent agenda.
All right, thank you, sir. Now with that, I will ask for a vote. Vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, passed unanimously. See, Judy, we're falling apart just thinking about you being gone over here. All right, item number six, recognition of involved citizens by city councils. Anybody out there who would like to say anything tonight that is for an item that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we move to public hearing on submitting an outdoor recreation grant application to construct a picnic warming facility within Riverside Fields Park. I need a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Standing by Counsel Whiting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, passed unanimously. Ms. Polly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. On February 21st, 2012, the City Council offered Resolution 7170, a resolution of the City of Shakopee, Minnesota authorizing the city to submit an outdoor recreation grant for the construction of a picnic/warming facility for Riverside's Fields Park. As part of the requirement of this grant application, we need to have a public hearing on the actual project itself, so this is a time for anybody to speak on that, and if you have any more questions, I can answer those.
All right, if anyone has questions? Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, can you refresh our memories? Is that a matching grant, or...?
It is a 50/50 matching grant, yep. And we are seeking 67,500 for the 50 percent share.
And that's one of our pre, our shelter design that we made that we're going to use?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Is anyone here in the audience for a public hearing tonight for this item? All right. Counsel Lehman?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, public hearing for item 6A is, sorry, 7A, sorry, it's closed. Now I need a motion to open 7B for a public hearing on proposed vacation easements located east of Dean Lakes Boulevard and south of Highway 169.
I move to open the public hearing.
Counsel Punt?
Second.
Counsel Whiting? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, passed unanimously. We are open for public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. This is an action related to the TriStar project, which you've acted on in a different context. The request this evening is to vacate a drainage and utility easement that was platted as a part of Dean Lake's 5th Edition. And the highlighted area is that drainage and utility easement. In your package, you have another map indicating a drainage and utility easement that was dedicated as a part of the final plat of Dean Lake's 8th Edition, which you've already approved. The report also talks about another easement, and I'll just touch on that briefly. It is an easement along Lot 7, 4, 5, and 6. This is a reciprocal private easement. There is no public interest, so it's not part of the request in front of you for action. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of the vacation. If you approve it, then what will happen is that the plat of Dean Lake's 8th Edition and this vacation will be recorded at roughly the same time, except that the vacation would be recorded first, so that when the plat is recorded, there is, or excuse me, I believe it's the plat will be recorded first, so that there will be no public need for the easement from Dean Lake 5th. They'll be recorded one right after the other. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We also have Steve Schwanke here for the applicant from RLK. If you have questions for him.
Thank you, Mr. Leek. Any questions? Counsel Lehman?
You might have answered my question in different terms. Basically, we're going to have the one easement being vacated, and yet...
And replaced with the new easement as part of the plat.
Can anyone be contingent on the old one being vacated or vice versa? So we're achieving this?
That's what we're accomplishing with the recording.
Okay.
By recording the plat with the new easement, so there is no longer a public need for the old easement.
Okay.
And then your action vacating it will be recorded right behind it.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, anyone in the audience here for the public hearing tonight for proposed vacation easements? All right, seeing none. Entertainer motion to close the public hearing? Counsel Lehman?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Standing by Mr. Clay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you much. Item number eight, business removed from the consent agenda.
Wait, wait, wait. Mr. Mayor, I would like to offer Resolution...
Thank you, I apologize.
...Number 7179, a resolution approving the vacation of a drainage and utility easement in Dean Lake's 5th Edition, and move its adoption.
I'll second.
Standing by Counsel Punt. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you much. Now can we go on to number eight? Thanks. Business removed from consent agenda discussed at this time, item 5B4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked this to be removed. The thought was brought to my attention by a former council member, and I thought it deserved some discussion tonight. The, with the appointment of, or with Judy retiring and we're reshuffling some job duties and job descriptions, I'm wondering, the last few years that the auditors have come by to give us their presentation for the audit, they've always expressed a minor concern about separation of certain duties and aspects of the financial, you know, duties. And I'm wondering if this has been flown by our auditors, these changes, and if so, if we are able to take advantage in this particular unique instance of being able to modify some job descriptions or job duties to help satisfy the auditor's concerns?
Do you want me to sign in? I'm Julie Linehan, Finance Director for the city, and I have to congratulate Judy because I just can say, after having my first anniversary here, she has been just an amazing individual to gain experience from, so thank you, Judy. Your question is very relevant. It relates to the segregation of duties, and that's been an issue that's been brought up numerous times during our audit reviews with the City of Shakopee. One of the areas that we've talked about since I began my work here, and there's been changes in the Finance Department and other positions, has been the issue of where are the specific areas of segregation of duties that are the most relevant to the audit? Those areas are specifically handling of cash, receipting of funds, use and dispersal of funds, and the actual tracking and recording of the public funds. When we talked about changing this position, that was exactly one of the areas that we discussed. By integrating the city clerk area, as you know, they'll physically be moving upstairs closer to finance, we're bringing along a transition of the records, the contracts, the actual financial flow of transactions, the audit process, all in one area, which will be all encompassing, and it will actually give us a broader base of staff to work from so that we do deal with some of these segregation of duties. We have talked about this with the audit staff from KDB. As issues have surfaced, we've talked to them about suggestions and criteria that as we rearrange jobs and move tasks, we have tried to keep them in the loop on this because it is a very relevant point when you're changing, and changing job descriptions, job tasks, workflows. So I think your point is very well taken, Councilmember Clay. This is an area that is of high concern to anyone in the financial area.
If I may, will the changes we're proposing to make here help to alleviate some of KDB's concerns that they've expressed?
Yes, yes, they will. This is an area of segregation of duties that, they look at the broad base from every area of the city, every site, whether it's Public Works, whether it's Police, whether it's the City Hall, all the off-site areas. When we take this move within city clerk and finance and administration and bring in staff and change the tasks, we feel this is a definite move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Counsel Lehman, you were, did you have anything you want to talk about this?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Counsel Clay?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to offer Resolution 7174, adopting a city clerk and move its adoption.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Counsel Whiting, any discussion on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes 4 to 1.
And then I see also would offer ordinance number 853 for a series, an ordinance amending city code section 2.06, executing of contracts and city seal, and repealing city code section 2.14, deputy city clerk, and move its adoption.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Clay, second by Counsel Whiting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes 4 to 1.
Counselor Lehman voting negative on both. Thank you.
All right. Now we move on to the other item removed from consent agenda, 5F4. Counsel Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I saw Mr. Higgs in the audience. I thought it'd be a good time to get a update on their progress and talk a little bit about what we're moving forward with that. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We came here tonight, we noticed that there was a piece on the agenda for opening up for RFPs, which we're all in support of. We couldn't believe if there's more people out there creatively thinking about how to reinvent downtown and how to possibly use some of these spaces, the more conversations we can have, the better. We have our proposal here tonight, just to officially file it, so it's been a month and a half since we were here last. We're in the process of filing our nonprofit. We're establishing a group, an umbrella group, of which the fire station project will be a project under that group. We've had a good time working on this project and a lot of really good energy, and we just feel like we'll keep moving on this regardless of where the fire station ends up, so. One of the big things that's happened in the last month and a half is to realize the need that there is out there for small organizations, support organizations, cultural organizations that don't have a home right now. It brought up kind of an interesting idea. This last weekend, we had the opportunity to talk to the folks from Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, which is a support organization for vets, helping them acclimate back into society. And they're looking for a place. They don't want a big place, they want a small place, and they want a place with a little bit of activity going on. They also want a place that can be a little bit discreet. In talking with them, I mentioned it before, one of our major purposes of this art center is less about the retail of art and more about the education and the awareness of arts and the transformative properties that art could take, could play in our society. And here's a perfect example. Here's an example where we could have two communities kind of working together on their own individual things, a little bit of cross-pollination there. It's just one of the ideas. We've had some communications with the Hispanic community as well for finding lack of community spaces in the downtown area and having to go all the way out to Jackson Town Hall for cultural events. You know, probably less of a permanent presence in the building, but to have that here is a very valuable thing. So it's kind of brought up this whole idea of this space being a potential asset for the city as an incubator for some of these small organizations that could come in for two, three-year program, work, work with the city to evaluate the success of it, and hopefully move to a point where they move beyond the building, as is possible. Great use for the building, but it's just another, it's just another idea, so. For our organization, we've made some great connections, we're very, we feel very strongly about them. We have a committee established, we have a team of 20 additional people working on this. You'll see in the, in the proposal, we have a series of advisors working with us, we have an architect, we have a fiscal agent, Kathy Claire from the Scott County Historical Society, we have a business plan development mentor through SCORE Organization, John Schor has offered to assist us with nonprofit issues, Mary Hernandez has offered to help us out with some cultural liaison work, and Kevin Weatherill has offered some pro bono assistance for us for filing our nonprofit. So things are moving forward pretty, at a pretty good clip. We also have had interested supporters that we've been, that have either contacted us or we've contacted from the community here, have been Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, Envision Minnesota, Feast Minneapolis, where we will be one of the potential grantees this Saturday at a communal dinner. Kind of an interesting idea where 200 people get together for $10 to $20, they all get a meal, and they all get a vote on one of six ideas that are presented. And at the end, the money's split up and given to three of those organizations to help further their projects, so. Savage Arts Council, Forecast for Public Art, Shakopee Rotary has mentioned a desire that they have funding that they would like to put into the arts, but there's no organization here for them to really put it into, aside from River Valley Theater or through the Historical Society, so. Spring Board for the Arts, River Valley Theater Company is also interested in working with us and works progress, so it's kind of where we're at. Do you have any questions or questions at all?
Counsel Whiting?
I want to congratulate you first by getting all the different groups together in Shakopee, and it seems like, you know, I've had a lot of phone calls, people interested, like different groups, and I keep pointing them in your direction, and I thank you for heading that up and taking that on.
Thanks for pointing them in our direction. We all get along pretty well once we get to meet each other.
You said you're working on your 501(c)(3) status.
Yep.
That'll take a little bit of time, but that is in progress.
Yep, it's in progress, and until then, we've got Kathy Claire as our fiscal, fiscal agent, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Counsel Clay?
This proposal is talking about wanting submissions of proposals in 60 days. sixty days, is that a workable timeline? It seems kind of short to me.
Well, we'll, we'll work with what we get, I mean, sixty days will be someplace, if we could get an additional, at least thirty days, we could be really square. Uh, the, we're just now looking into the operational and ki- kind of setting the, the growth model and some of the, the kind of benchmarks, and it's kind of, it is a bit of a new area for us. We're lucky we've got some of the advisors we have to kind of help us through that, to help us find some resources, so.
All right, any other questions? All right, did, uh, Beyond the Yellow, did you want to say anything?
Um, I don't think I need to unless you have some questions for me, um, we...
You gotta come up to the...
Do you want to come on up?
If you want to say anything, you gotta come up.
And sign your name. There you go.
My name is Denise Catterlick, I am the Vice Chair of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon South of the River, which, um, we will be receiving our proclamation from Governor Dayton and General Nash on the thirtieth of March. Um, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, south of the river encompasses all of Scott County. I'm not sure you're aware of it or not, but Shakopee has the largest number of military and veterans in the county of all the seven cities, so. Uh, we are looking for a place to call home, if you will, for our military personnel and their families. Um, in meeting with Mike, some of the suggestions and some of the thoughts we had was even providing some education tied to the arts, to music, to woodworking, that we could bring those, those, those folks that, that need a little bit of that type of therapy here, and also allow for them a place to come, um, to meet, group counseling sessions, maybe once a month, offer something where the children of these deployed soldiers could get together and meet and, and just talk about what it's like to have their parent, one or the other, away, so, um, we're pretty fired up. We are already a 501(c)(3). We've already done some fundraising, we have our second annual Military Appreciation Day set for Lyons Park in September, so, um, excited about being able to work with Mike and willing to do whatever we can do and roll up our sleeves and make this happen. We started in two thousand and ten with seven members, we're a hundred and thirty strong right now, so, the intention is to double our membership this year and to get this center open one way or another, so, we're here to work and here to help, so.
Councilor Clay?
Thank you, just curious, is there any, uh, state or federal money available, grant-wise?
Actually, we are going to be looking into that as far as, uh, with the VA. Um, we have some contacts there. We also have resources as far as counselors from the VA Outreach Program that are willing to come to this site, um, once or twice in a week and spend some time counseling, um, that's their job, but we are also looking into some grant money from them too, to see what we can do. We've got to know we've got a place to go before we can go ask for that, so, um, we do intend to, um, pursue that.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Anything else? Councilman?
On the item, um, I'm just wondering if, I think it would be great if Chris could get up and just talk through very briefly the RFP process and the timeline that's outlined, just for the benefit of the public watching?
Exactly. Thank you both for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, the staff memo that was in your packet, um, for this evening, asks for the City Council to direct staff to issue an RFP, which stands for Request for Proposals. It's essentially a formal way for the city to say, "We are looking for," in this case, "ideas for the best possible, um, use of the downtown fire station property," which we're no longer using as a fire station. What an RFP would encompass is that we would ask that all proposals, um, give us the name and contact information for an individual, a group, an organization, a business that may be interested in the building, and then a description of what they would propose as the best, um, future use of the property. This would be open to people that might be interested in outright purchasing the building for some kind of private use or business in the future, as well as to community groups or entities that would be looking to put it to some community use and have some kind of partnership with the city where the city continued to be the owner or otherwise involved in the operation of the building. So, it's, at this point, we're casting a wide net, looking for good ideas on where to go with the building. For those groups that are, um, envision some kind of continued city ownership or involvement, we would ask them to also provide a description of the building repairs, changes, or upgrades necessary for the use that they envision, um, proposed sources of funding for the building repairs and upgrades, as well as proposed sources of funding for the ongoing operating costs. Um, and then, the final section would be, the flip side, people that don't foresee a continued city, um, involvement, but an outright purchase of the building, we would ask them to give us a desired timeline for completing sale and transferring ownership. At this point, we would not be asking for formal purchase offers with prices attached to them and, and that type of level of detail. It's more of a brainstorming exercise at this point and get a sense of what options might be out there that we haven't previously considered for the building. If after reviewing the RFPs, the council felt that there was, the most valid route forward was sale of the building, we can then entertain purchase offers at that point with a specific price attached and so forth. Um, the recommendation is that the RFP would go, um, out on our website, using our Facebook page and other means to get the word out there that we are taking, um, proposals, um, by the end of the week, and then set the deadline at May twenty-fifth, which is a sixty-day timeline for people to provide a proposal. Um, Councilmember Clay asked about that possibly being a little bit on the tight side. While I don't necessarily disagree with that, I think staff's thinking on why sixty days was, if there's an entity out there that contin- envisions continued city use and participation, we need to budget for that. So, we need to have some sense in June of what kind of money you might be looking at putting into the building next year, so that it can make its way into our budget process. If we get much later than that, um, it's going to be pretty tough for the city to allocate any kind of operating resources for next year into the plan. Um, and lastly, before bringing the projects back to you, the final step, which isn't in the RFP and isn't expected of the applicants, is our Community Development Department would do a, uh, just a simple first look review to say, "Does this fit with the zoning of the area?" Um, and that type of thing, to see if we foresee any problems with the proposed uses that are laid out for you. That won't rule anything out, you'll still see every single proposal that we get back, you'll just get some staff, you know, comments in addition to what the proposers have submitted.
All right, any questions? I actually have a question. What, why would we not, um, if we're asking for people who want to buy it, why wouldn't we ask a dollar amount to be along with that, so that we can know what we're comparing to between the projects that we have that want to use the building?
I suppose you could ask for it, I think at this stage, when we are casting such a wide net, we may have some people reluctant to give a price and put it out there, usually the nego- the negotiated price of a sale of land is something that actually state law allows a council to do in private session, not in the kind of public forum that this RFP creates.
So, does it make sense to even entertain people who want to just outright purchase the building at that, at this point in the process, or if we have people who come forward in sixty days, none of the plans really make sense for the city, then we can go back to where we were the first of Ju- January and say, "The building's for sale, do what we need to." I mean, I don't know...
You could cer- the council could certainly decide that at this point, you're only interested in proposed kind of what I'll call a community use of the building, if that's the, the preference of the city council. This was intended to give you kind of the broadest possible spectrum of, of future uses of the building, and basically not to rule anything out at this standpoint, but that would be up to your discretion as to how broad or wide of a net you wish to cast at this point.
Okay, what do people think up there? Councilor Clay?
If you're ready, I'd like to make a motion.
Go for it.
To authorize appropriate staff to issue a request for proposals for future uses of the downtown fire station property, with a deadline for responses set at July thirtieth, which is different from the requested action date. With a second, I would like to speak to that.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second then.
Second by Councilor Whiting. Councilor Clay?
I think that, uh, if we're going out for requests for proposals to businesses, things like that, ninety days is, is more than, or sixty days is, you know, adequate time. In this case, we're looking at requests for proposals from groups and volunteer organizations, things like that, and having worked with so many of them over all these years, that I, I just know that, you know, this is a, a much slower process than, than you're going to be able to realize in, in a business setting. Um, and I, I just don't think sixty days is enough, and I understand staff's concern about, um, budget issues for the, for the city, but, you know, we, though we don't really just need to set the final, you know, preliminary budget until September fifteenth. And we did talk at our planning and goals session about possibly giving some, uh, levy direction to city staff much earlier than that, so I, I understand your concern, but I think we can work through that.
All right, any other discussion? Councilor Whiting?
Uh, one quick question, uh, um, Chief Rick had mentioned that it's still on the Fire Department budget. Is that something we want to keep on his budget, or is that something that should go back to the general fund?
Let's, uh, let's vote on this motion that's on the floor first, if that...
True.
Sorry, but let's keep it to the motion on the discussion, and then we'll get to that, I promise. Any other discussion about the motion?
Um, and in the direction, in the motion, it wasn't clear on the discussion point that you had, Mayor, around if we are including the sale of the property within it, um, that there wasn't a modification made, I just wanted to call that out.
Yeah, I think that's the motion on the floor.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, all right, any other discussion on the motion?
So, the motion, Mayor, includes the recommendations of the staff to do all of the above?
Yes.
Okay.
And just modify the due date.
Yep, exactly. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Five to zero. And Councilor Whiting?
Uh, my concern was, is this going to affect the Fire Department budget? And I'm not sure what that is for the downtown station now that it's unoccupied, um, but I would hate to, uh, see that encumber him in any way, uh, from the Fire Department budget.
Ms., Mr. Mayor, if I can, right now, the expenses that the city is incurring for the building are very limited, um, utility costs, um, property insurance, and the occasional repair, for example, we had a broken window, um, a month or so ago, that needed to be fixed, and so, there was a charge for that. So, those are the types of costs that we're incurring right now. We have canceled phone service, internet service, and garbage pickup, you know, everything we can possibly cancel on the property we have. So, it's a fairly modest cost at, at this point. Um, when you say transfer it to the general fund, um, in your earlier comment, the Fire Department budget is the general fund, so, we can account for it somewhere else, but it's all coming out of the same bank account, basically, there is, you know, no other. I guess my recommendation would be that we leave it alone for this year's budget, we're already, you know, twenty-five percent of the way through the year, and we have an adopted budget, and staff doesn't foresee any problem with the Fire Department living within its existing budget with it, but that it would definitely be an issue for next year's budget if we were going to continue to own and possibly participate in operating this building, then it would make sense to find it a home in the budget that is separate from the Fire Department. I don't know if the Finance Director has a different...
Councilman Lehman?
Is the Fire Department being, uh, build, building rental on that building?
No. It's all, it's, it's so old and paid for, it's depreciated.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wilson. All right, moving on to item, uh, sorry, entertain a motion to recess for Economic Development Authority meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Clay, second by Councilor Whiting, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we are recessed for Economic Development Authority meeting. President Clay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will now call the regular session of the Economic Development Authority and inform the city of Shakopee to order. Judy, if you would, please make note of the role.
Yes, Mr. President.
Are there any changes or additions to the printed agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Lehman?
Remove the agenda.
Lehman to move, so approve the agenda, seconded by Ms. Punt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Uh, next item would be approval of the minutes from February twenty-first, two thousand and twelve, Mr. Lehman.
Remove the minutes of February twenty-first, two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Whiting, discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item would be election of the Economic Development Authority Secretary. Now that we are losing sadly Judy, we need to appoint someone to fill this spot, which as I understand requires very little work from any of the, uh, authority members, except for the occasional signing of a few documents. Mr. Lehman?
I'll nominate either...
We gotta pick one.
Or Whiting, whichever one wants it.
Okay, now, no fighting?
I'm really busy, so maybe you want it.
I'll nominate Pamela Punt as Secretary of the EDA.
I'll second that.
Pamela Punt has been nominated by Lehman, seconded by Whiting. Discussion, I guess the nominations don't need discussions, excuse me. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to cast a white ballot for Pamela Punt for Secretary. Mr. Lehman?
Motion for white ballot, uh, for Pamela Punt, Secretary of EDA.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Punt.
Pays a hundred grand a year.
Yeah.
Good gig.
If this were Chicago. Um, is there any other business to come before the body tonight? Seeing none, Mr. Lehman?
Move to adjourn to Tuesday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twelve.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Punt. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you all, we are adjourned.
All right, we reconvene the, uh, city council meeting and move on to item eleven B1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, the staff memo for this item was on the table when you arrived tonight. It has to do with a procedural issue in staffing at the Police Department. Um, all of our Police Department employees, both, both licensed police officers as well as civilian employees, fall under the rules of the Police Civil Service Commission, which governs, um, hiring, promotions, appointments, those types of personnel issues in the Police Department. Um, earlier on the agenda tonight, you accepted the resignation of one of the city's four records technicians. You may recall, two weeks ago, you accepted the resignation of another one of our records technicians, so as of April sixth, the unit will be down to just, uh, two out of the four budgeted positions. Um, the hiring within the civil service process takes a little bit longer than our standard hiring practice, we do have a process underway at this moment, the application deadline was Friday, we received over two hundred and eighty applications for the positions, so it's going to take us a little while to get through those applications, as well as to, um, conduct the kind of background check that we do for this type of position. Therefore, the department would like to put somebody in on a provisional basis to help, um, with the workload, so that they can keep, um, cases moving and on schedule and so forth. Luckily for us, the rules of the Civil Service Commission allow for this type of thing in what's called a provisional appointment. These are, this is the actual language from the Civil Service Commission rules, and what you're being asked to do tonight is step, kickoff step A. Says upon receipt of a requisition from the appointing authority, um, the commission may grant authority to fill such a position by a provisional appointment. You are the appointing authority, so I am asking you to requisition the commission to allow a provisional appointment. The way this will work is staff will let the commission know that the commission will meet, meet next week, presumably give their approval, we will be back in front of you two weeks from tonight to actually make the provisional appointment, so. A procedural move at this point, and we do have a candidate identified, the department has an intern that's already been backgrounded and received, um, starting training for the job, so that's someone that could jump in there and, um, be a valuable member of the department while we finish off the hiring process here.
Councilman Lehman?
I'll move to direct staff to requisition the Police Civil Service Commission for the authority to fill one of the vacant record tech positions by a provisional appointment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Punt. Um, any discussion? Councilor Whiting?
Uh, could you explain the difference between the temporary appointments and the provisional appointments? Because the temporary appointments claim that it should be an emergency... Because the temporary appointments claim that it should be an emergency situation.
I'm not really sure why there are both. They have different sets of rules. You'll notice in the temporary appointment, it cannot be for any more than thirty days, whereas the provisional appointment allows us for ninety days and then a second ninety day term. Honestly, that's the reason why we're asking for the provisional and not the temporary, is that we don't think the thirty days is sufficient enough to cover the gap that we're going to have. Why they both exist in the rules, I do not know. These rules are drafted after state statute and predate me here at the city by a long way. So I couldn't tell you why they've provided for two different processes. I don't know the answer.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Moving on to eleven F one, establishing precinct boundaries and designating polling places. Ms. Cox? You have your cheering section up here.
Such a colorful page.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the council. Tonight you have before you an ordinance to establish the precincts for the city of Shakopee. That is required every ten years after the census and the redistricting takes place. Also, you have before you a resolution establishing the polling places for each of those precincts that you're establishing. On February twenty-first, the legislative districts were established, and most of Shakopee is now located within Legislative District fifty-five A, and a small portion of Shakopee is actually located in Legislative District fifty-five B. Cities and townships must now establish their precincts. Following the establishment of the precincts, counties will then establish their commissioner districts. Since Shakopee members are elected at large, there are no population restrictions that need to be considered. Considerations that have gone into this process are that all precincts by state statute must follow physical features. We must, the state recommends that your population of registered voters be between two thousand and three thousand, so that it's a more manageable precinct. We should consider the potential growth in the community in the particular precinct we're looking at, so that we have room for growth. And to identify polling places within the precinct, and if that's not possible, they must be within at least one mile of the actual boundaries of the precinct. State law also requires that all of the voters receive notification whenever their precinct changes or their polling place changes. Because Shakopee is going from Legislative District thirty-four to Legislative District fifty-five A and fifty-five B, all of Scott County will need to receive notification of their change. In the notifications that come, that involve any changes for any residents in Shakopee due to polling place changes, that information will also be included on their notification. Those notifications come from the county. They actually are generated at the Secretary of State's office, and the county will share in that expense, and the city of Shakopee will share in a portion of that expense for those residents that need to be notified of changes as a result of our changes of our polling places. The first, let's see. Excuse me, just a minute. City staff consisting of the deputy city clerk, Jeanette Shaner, city planner Kyle Saboda, and myself have met on a number of occasions examining the city of Shakopee and how to change the precincts that we need to, that need to be changed. We've also been in consultation with representatives at the county, the election supervisor, Mary Kay Kess, and the GIS manager, Jim Bunny. Staff is recommending, as a result of this opportunity, of subdividing one of our very large precincts in Shakopee that is actually located twelve A, is east of County Road eighty-three. It's a very large precinct, and we are proposing to subdivide that precinct into two precincts, because now we have the creation of County Road twenty-one. That gives us a physical feature that we can utilize. So precinct four will then, we're recommending be lie, that would lie north of Eagle Creek Boulevard and County Road twenty-one. And the new precinct twelve would actually be located south of Eagle Creek Boulevard and County Road twenty-one. Precinct twelve A lies in Legislative District fifty-five A. Precinct twelve B lies in District fifty-five B. We are required to establish a precinct when it's in a different legislative district, hence fourteen, hence twelve B is being created. Because it's such a small precinct, the state law allows us to partner that precinct with the twelve A, and that all the voters in both precincts will vote at the same polling place, will utilize the same election judges, will utilize the same precinct counter and auto mart. But the ballots will be programmed in such a way that the candidates from the two different districts will be identified as to who the winners are. The other change that is being required as a result of redistricting has to do with precinct thirteen. Precinct thirteen lies south of County Road forty, fourteen and count, south of County Road forty-two. It lies all in District fifty-five B, and we're required to create a precinct for that. Because it is so small, we can also utilize the same polling place as a neighboring precinct, utilize the same election judges, the same precinct counter, and the same polling place. And again, the ballots would be programmed so that the successful candidates from the two different districts would be kept track of and be properly recorded. And in this particular case, the folks that are in this part of thirteen B are already used to voting at the polling place that we're establishing for the southerly part. So some of these voters won't, will not change polling places. Some of these voters will change polling places. Then the other change that we're proposing has to do with the more populated, or I should say, the older part of the community that is located in what will become precinct one and two. That was three precincts, and they were very small precincts. So we're proposing to take the middle precinct and put half of it in one and half of it in two. As a result of doing so, the polling place for precinct one will no longer become adequate. So we're proposing a new polling place for that. As a result of making this change, going from three precincts to two, we're going to have an extra precinct counter and an extra auto mart, which if we had to go out and purchase would probably be in the neighborhood of six thousand dollars each. Having that extra precinct counter and auto mart will allow us to take that then and use it in our new precinct twelve. So we won't have any additional expenses to incur as a result of the fact that we're subdividing this area into two precincts. In summary, Shakopee will be going from twelve precincts to fourteen precincts. The new precincts are twelve A and twelve B, and thirteen minus one combined with precincts one and two. And there will be no additional purchases that the city will incur as a result of our, creating our new precincts. The two new polling places that we're going to need for the proposed changes is the junior high at Tenth and Lewis will become the new voting precinct, polling place for precinct one, because we're moving away from the Valley View Church, because it's no longer adequate in size. And Eagle Creek Elementary School on Eagle Creek Boulevard and County Road twenty-one, that will be the new polling place for the voters in the newly created precincts twelve A and twelve B. We've been in contact with the school, and they're amenable to allow us to utilize their gym for elections. Again, before you, you have an ordinance establishing the new precincts and a resolution to establish the new polling places. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
All right, do you have any questions? Council Lehman?
Well, Judy, one of the questions I have is, I'm looking at this new proposed, and some of these polling places, like, let's take six. Six has got five, six, and one all located in six, even though one's kind of close to one. Is, maybe you can kind of give us, give me an idea of why that is? And, I mean, is it because we only have certain places we can use?
Mr. Lehman, members of the council. In Shakopee, we don't have a lot of opportunities for large facilities to accommodate our voters. So what we've found is that in most cases, if we can use a city facility, like the community center, or the fire station, or the police department, that is the first one that we look at. And then, secondly, we look at churches that might have large fellowship halls. And the churches that we utilize have been very good to us and allowed us to do that. And then, when we don't have those opportunities within the precinct or within a certain radius of the precinct, then we look to a new school to utilize that. We have to consider where the polling place is in relationship to the voters. We look at parking opportunities that are there. And we have to consider handicapped accessibility, which are rules that are handed down to us. So that is what we're looking for. I'm not sure, did I answer your question?
I think so. We're within the one mile, it is, from each precinct?
All of our, correct.
All right.
Correct. We are allowed to go outside the boundaries of the city, if that's necessary, which we have a precinct that that is the case. But it's very close, and again, it has to be within a one mile radius of the boundaries of the precinct it serves.
Okay. Do we need any more election judges for extra precincts?
Thank you for asking that question. This is a non-paid advertisement. Yes, this year, we're going to be having a presidential election, so we'll be utilizing more election judges than we do in the, when we have the governor's race. We'll be needing more election judges than when we have a city race, because we always scale down depending upon the voter expectancy. We always lose a few election judges. They retire, or they move, or they have family commitments, or they're taking care of elderly people, or they need to take care of their children. Every year, when we have a large election, we're always looking for new election judges. This year, we believe that we are also going to be possibly in need of some head election judges. We try really hard to use head election judges who have had experience working, first of all, within the precinct that we need them. And secondly, sometimes we try and consult with election judges who've worked outside that precinct. But oftentimes, people are more comfortable being election judges than they are taking on the role of being the head judge and getting to answer all the tough questions and having to tell the voters, I'm sorry, but you can't because the law says this. So there's a little bit of extra responsibility and guidance and everything that that person takes on. So if we have any listening viewers that might be interested in learning more about being an election judge or a head election judge, thank you for asking the question. We welcome those calls.
Do they contact you?
They should contact the city offices and ask to talk with the, someone in the city clerks department.
Okay.
Probably Ms. Jeanette Shaner would be the direct person they would be communicating with. She's my deputy, and she's the one who will be carrying on administering the election process.
Okay.
And election judges are paid?
Election judges are paid.
Sort of.
They're not paid a lot. Originally, it started out more as a volunteer thing, and people, most people that work as an election judges don't look to that. But I think we're paying, my vague recollection is I think we're paying like eight seventy-five for an election judge and nine seventy-five for a head judge, something in that neighborhood.
They'll be knocking down the doors.
Well, we could, we could use some more, we could use some more. We, we get lists from the county through the parties, and we draw from those first. And then, when we find that our list is shrinking because things have changed from the time when the individuals notified the party that they were interested, then we have to look to the people who've worked before who aren't affiliated with a party. Are there any other questions?
Council Punt?
Council? So it sounds like in the new twelve A, twelve B, is that the only precinct that will have multiple ballots?
No.
Multiple versions?
No, it is not. In precinct, precinct eleven neighbors precinct thirteen. Precinct thirteen is in Legislative District fifty-five B. But we're going to, they're going to vote at the same polling place as those in precinct eleven. So there will be multiple ballots there. As I envision it happening is when you go into the polling place, you sign the roster. If you're a registered voter, there will be two rosters. If you're in thirteen, you sign this roster. If you're in eleven, you sign this roster. Then the election judge knows which ballot you get. Then you go to the ballot judge with your, with your receipt that you get, and it will mark whether or not you get a ballot for precinct thirteen or whether or not you get a ballot for precinct eleven. Then the election judge who has the ballots needs to look at that receipt and determine which ballot you get.
So would it be fair to say that those precincts require more election judges to run efficiently?
I do not believe that will be necessary, because in both cases, the number of registered voters that we're talking about are not a lot. We usually have two or three people who handle the roster, because we divide the alphabet. And when most of the people come up to register, the judges can either ask them, they might not remember that they got a postcard a month ago and that they are in this precinct. So I would envision that they would check the roster that has the larger number. And when they find their name isn't there, then the election judge will have to ask them, are you registered? Yes, I'm registered. And then check the other roster. But I don't envision that we would have to have election judges because of that process. Now, if and when we have the voter ID process and we have to deal with provisional voting, that will require additional staffing, additional judges. But I don't envision that to be necessary at this time for this change.
Okay.
Council Lehman's question answered most of my questions as well. But as I'm sitting here looking at it, I just had another question that came to me. Why is it eleven, twelve A, twelve B, and thirteen? Eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen? Why is it twelve A and twelve B instead of twelve and thirteen?
Because they can piggyback off each other when they're separate districts.
That's a very good question. This was a very interesting year to put this together, and we learned some new things. My understanding is, we're supposed to follow physical features when we draw our boundaries. When you look at twelve B, it does not follow physical features. It is landed, is owned by the Shakopee Minnetokwac and Sioux community. They own additional land, but this was the land that was looked at when they did the census. And it's my understanding and drawing the lines for the legislative districts, they tried to keep areas that are like together. So the Shakopee twelve B is in the same legislative district as the SMSC property owned to the south. Cause it doesn't follow physical features. It must reside within a precinct that does have physical features, hence twelve. Now, when you have a situation where there aren't physical features, it has to have the same number as the parent. So hence, we have twelve A and twelve B. When you look at precinct thirteen, it does in fact follow physical features. And so it becomes a new precinct number unto itself.
Got it.
Good question.
This is quite the science.
Right.
Um, Councilman Lehman?
But thirteen can piggyback with eleven at the same polling place because they're two separate districts?
Good question. I didn't wanna put all this in the memo, so, good question.
We're gonna make you, we're gonna make you talk for nine more years.
We'll all get very tired and hungry. There is another law that says up to four precincts can be combined together and utilize the same voting place. If the total number of registered voters is under twenty-five hundred. Still has to have its own number, but they can utilize the same polling place, the same election judges, the same precinct counter.
All right, any other questions? Councilor Punt?
And you have an apprentice in this process?
I have a very good deputy city clerk who has worked very closely. We are, I keep telling her, this is a, this is a, a team, we're a team. She has worked in the elections for, I mean, she's been with the city thirty-five years. She's worked in my department on more than one occasion, more recently for the last twelve. And she actually does most of the work dealing with the administrating of the elections. She's been involved in this whole process and she will continue to be doing those, those duties. When the two departments, the finance and the clerk are merged together, she will still continue to do that. And then someone else in my department will then start to move into learning some more things and eventually, you know, they'll work together. This is too big an operation to have one person and have them get hit by a truck. You've got to have in your organization backup. That's always been my plan. So, yes, we have a very capable resident that will, deputy city clerk that will carry on. I have all the confidence in the world. I leave this community in my position feeling really good about it because I have really good staff that really know what they do. You have hired a really good finance director who has had experiences in other communities. That have touched in areas of the city clerk's operation. I, I'm feeling okay about leaving.
Councilman Lehman?
Thank you.
Your deputy doesn't have any plans of retiring in the next couple of weeks, does she?
I can assure you, she has no plans of retiring in the next couple of weeks.
Alright.
Any other questions?
Alright, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Lehman?
I'll offer ordinance number eight fifty-two, fourth series, an ordinance of the city of Shakopee. Repealing city code chapter two, section two twenty, precinct boundaries and adding a new section, two point two two, precinct boundaries, move its adoption. I'll offer, also offer resolution seventy-one eighty, a resolution designating fourteen polling places for all election precincts in the city of Shakopee and move its adoption.
Do we have a second? Second by Councilor Clay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now we can move on with the next steps.
Alright, item eleven F two, out-of-state travel policy.
I, I think you understand why we're gonna miss Judy. That's the reason why we wanted to get it done tonight before she retires. So, um, the next item business is talking actually about investing in our employees. And really asking you to, uh, give us some direction to come back with a change to the existing out-of-state travel policy. For city employees, a number of years ago, back when we were having a particularly difficult budget year. Uh, the practice was adopted that there would be no out-of-state travel unless it was, uh, for training. And would be substantially paid for through other sources of funding. Typically, that would be grants. What happened with that is that, uh, with the exception of police and fire, there really wasn't a lot of other, uh, training money available. So we didn't really invest in employees. Because of homeland security and because of, uh, police sorts of federal grants, those seemed to be more available. So we did adopt that policy, however, it's been at least four times, uh, we can find over the past few years that you've made exception, exceptions to that. What we'd like to do, especially in view of at least a preliminary finding, one of them last Tuesday, that your goal-setting session was to look at staffing and support for staffing. And again, training that isn't always available within the confines of the state of Minnesota. It's something that we would like to have you look at directing us to come back and doing. As long as it's one, we can show that it's, uh, something that's beneficial to the city and to the employee. And secondly, that we have a source of funding for that. Um, with that, we also have two pending requests that have been made to me. One for a two-day seminar, uh, in Madison, Wisconsin. And then a national, uh, conference in Chicago, Illinois, both relatively close and affordable. But, uh, we would like to have you, regardless of what you do with the other policy, uh, give me the authority to grant, uh, those two employees the opportunity to register for all of those. Questions or comments?
Councilman Lehman?
You mentioned two stipulations. Can we put a third one in there? That the item that they're seeking training at is not available locally?
We can certainly take a look at language putting in there. Certainly, if we have an opportunity to do something in the Twin Cities, we're not going to send somebody to California to do that sort of thing. Um, oftentimes, however, in the case of national conferences, you're going to get an exposure, you're gonna get the type of training at that national conference. Which probably isn't going to be available locally. But what we will come back with is something that I assure you will use common sense and the best use of dollars to do.
Any other questions? Alright, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to direct city administrator to return with language to amend the personnel policy regarding out-of-state travel. And give him interim authorization to permit two existing requests for the assistant city administrator to attend training in Madison, Wisconsin. And for the finance director to attend a conference in Chicago.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilor Whiting. Any discussion? Councilman Lehman?
Yeah, I'm hoping that we don't go from one extreme to the other. One extreme was no out-of-state travel and the next is open the floodgates. I hope we find a happy medium here somewhere.
Mr. Mayor and Councilor, I assure you that we'll continue to be judicious.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item eleven F three, representative appointments, the tribunal intergovernmental working group.
Mayor and council, in the February twenty-first meeting, you, uh, heard a proposal to authorize city participation in a memorandum of understanding. Between, uh, the city of Prior Lake and Shakopee and Scott County and the Minnetawakatin Sioux, uh, community. From that, there is an intergovernmental working group that is going to be comprised of representatives of each of those jurisdictions. That will work on the provision of services and how we might work more closely together. Um, that evening, you made the motion and appointed, uh, Mr. Leek and Mr. Looney as the city's representatives. Since that time, we've had, uh, feedback from the other three jurisdictions who have used, who have appointed actually a combination of elected officials and, uh, staff. As their representatives. The city of Prior Lake last night, I understand, appointed the mayor and the city manager as their primary representatives. Scott County has the board chair and the, uh, county administrator as their primary representatives. And, uh, the, uh, Minnetawakatin Sioux have, uh, one of their tribal council members as a primary member. And I believe this, the county, or excuse me, the tribal administrator. What we would suggest is that one of you is an elected official. And two, if both of you would be available for what appear to be daytime meetings. Uh, be considered for appointment as a primary, uh, representatives for Shakopee. If we don't have two, I would suggest to appoint, uh, me as a city administrator. And then to have Mr. Leek and Mr. Looney continue as the alternate, uh, representatives. Depending on the type of business being conducted, they would be attending as well. Questions or comments?
Councilman Lehman?
How often do they meet and what time?
The, uh, MOU talks about quarterly meetings, I believe, earlier on. We're probably going to be meeting more frequently than that. It appears, at least from the conversation that's been going on between the three, four of us, uh, that it would be daytime meetings either mornings or afternoons.
So quarterly or?
More frequently, again, depending on the type of business and how much needs to be done. But I think minimum quarterly is what the, uh, memorandum of understanding talks about.
Okay.
Other questions?
I could probably make myself available for that one.
It would be difficult for me.
Um, I would very much like to be the primary representative for the city, myself. Alright, any discussion?
Weren't you looking for possibly two?
You can have as, uh, the Scott County has actually one primary and two alternates as their elected officials. If you want to send two, uh, elected officials, that's your purview.
Would we have a primary and an alternate? Is that how it would work?
What they're looking for is two primaries and then you could have two or, uh, three alternates if that's your desire.
Okay, so.
So would you wanna be an alternate?
Doesn't matter, just if I can show up, that would be great. Am I gonna get kicked out if I'm an alternate?
No.
I'll say it. Yeah, that's fine.
Do we?
I'm gonna put that in motion.
Want to put a motion?
So I could, I can take a shot at the motion. Um, that council appoint as primary representatives, um, Mayor Tapke and city administrator Mark Neal. With three alternative representatives of Councilor Matt Lehman, Michael Leek, and Bruce Looney. To the intergovernmental working group.
Second up.
Second by Councilor Whiting. Alright, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Item twelve, council member reports. Council Whiting?
I attended the last school board meeting, uh, nothing to report.
Councilor Clay?
It's still a learning experience.
Yes, it is.
Uh.
At least he gets food.
Yes. They don't feed me. They don't feed me. I gotta get there early.
Well, I think that should be a consideration that you need to put.
Protest.
The Shakopee Public Utilities Commission met yesterday, um. They are doing some repair and maintenance work to a, a couple of wells, which are going along on schedule. Um, they're, put the nice weather and the early frost out. They've been able to get to work on, uh, checking and repairing some various gate vel, water gate valves within the city. Um, actually, everything is, as you might imagine, is kind of ahead of schedule. Uh, there was a, a brief, uh, power outage in the city Friday, March ninth, due to an underground cable splice that failed. You may also notice that the, uh, lights on the Home Street Bridge, historic Home Street Bridge are not on, or at least they weren't yesterday. Uh, there was a, uh, short circuit or a failure of, of a circuit in that, uh, system. Which, uh, should be covered under quarantine and hopefully repaired soon. We still need to decide, uh, what we wanna do with, or if we want to help contribute towards the cost of electricity in lighting that bridge. Utility is currently doing it on their nickel, hoping for some help along the way.
Do we need to have that as a future agenda item?
Uh, might not hurt. And then, uh, the Utility Commission has partnered with a, uh, group called O-Power. Which sent out a, uh, a number of, um, mailings for a, a program. Which helps residents monitor their electrical use and find ways of, of saving money and, and keeping track of their savings and, and power usage. Um, it's a, a national organization that does this. Uh, we are just, in two thousand eleven, we're, we're only started it just in the last five months of two thousand eleven. But in that five-month period, they, we're able to measure savings of nearly two percent. And we still have two and a half years to go on, on this program. Uh, it's eight hundred ninety-four kilowatt hours. It's ten percent of, ahead of what they forecasted for twenty-eleven savings. And the, uh, of all the mailings and stuff that went out, only nine customers. Which represents point zero seven percent, seven tenths of, or seven hundredths of a percent. Uh, of the customers that were offered this, decided to opt out and not, not do it. Which is the lowest dropout rate, uh, in the nation. So we've got some very thrifty, thrift-minded citizens in Shakopee who are really taking advantage of this program. And, and making it work to, to their advantage. And that's about it.
Very good. Councilman Lehman?
Uh, let's see, no Derby Days meeting, didn't make the one sixty-nine in Mankato for a conflict, time conflict, conflict. No railroad, but I did attend the county board meeting this morning.
Really? Let's have a report on that one.
Boy.
Wanted to see that.
Makes the council look pretty functional.
I don't know if we should take that as a compliment or not. First time.
Well, on a good note, um, the independent investigator found that the six, uh, allegations against the county administrator were, uh, uh, unfounded. Or I can't remember what the word was. It was, uh.
Unsubstantiated.
Unsubstantiated, yeah. Which I guess is a good thing.
To no one's surprise.
So, that's all I have for tonight.
Alright, Councilor Punt?
On Wednesday, February twenty-second, I attended the Scott Community Transit Review Board meeting. And, um, it was, so it was about a month ago. We have our next meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. Um, the discussion was around, we got some legislative updates. Um, of course, early in the session, so looking at a couple of things with optimism. Um, one being the one-on-one river crossing, of course, and, um, optimism around the initial meeting with the governor. And then there was some transit governance work going on as well. Um, so I expect to get an update on those items on the twenty-eighth of March. We also have the Eagle Creek Transit Station still under construction. Expected to open this late spring, I believe, early summer. Um, and so we'll get an update on that. And then the seventeen and Marshall, or the Marshall Road, um, transit station site plan has been pretty well solidified. Um, primarily some reconfiguration of the parking to allow for four hundred parking spaces. And, um, they're working towards bringing that online, obviously, and it'll happen, um, in a transition process. So it'll likely, if I recall correctly, it'll likely be another year before it would be fully operational. But they're already storing some vehicles there, so I'm sure we'll get an update on that as well.
Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I'll piggyback on that report just a little bit. But the one sixty-nine coalition, quarter coalition, had a discussion at its last meeting, um, February meeting. With Jefferson Lines, who is considering potentially becoming a connector. With some of these transit stations and the, the old Denny Hacker site was one of them. To where they could actually use that as a transfer station to connect to places that our system doesn't connect to. And possibly even connect other areas, you know, that, uh, other places have service that don't connect to. As kind of a filler until the Met Council can at least. as kind of a filler until the Met Council can at least figure out that it's in everybody's best interest, both their services they provide, our services we provide, and every other service provider, to make these connections amongst each other. Because the ultimate end result is they all get more ridership and the general public that needs to use the services have more options, more ability to use the services. So it's kind of a win-win for everybody, but there's a reluctance on the Met Council's behalf to do that because, you know, speculation would say that they want a strong arm and take over the whole system and this, that and the other thing. But, but there is a possibility of other methods of making them connections and the one sixty-nine coalition is looking at that.
And my understanding is the Met Council, I'm not sure which representatives will be at the April meeting of scale. So if we have questions around that, Susan Hagey is actually gonna be there. So it'd be good to have any questions ready for that April meeting to address some of those things.
At some point, they might get pressured into doing what's proper.
What was that?
At some point, they might get pressured into doing what's beneficial to the opt-outs and the Suburbans and Southwest Metro and everybody else.
That is one thing that we, at scale, we talked about just that at the executive committee meeting and preparing for the meeting where she's coming, to have questions in line. And those are questions that we're definitely talking about as respectfully as possible. And thank you for other things that they do for us. And so, the scale meeting, two Fridays ago, we had a discussion, presentations about economic development corridors throughout Scott County. And Shakopee is uniquely seated in Scott County for a lot of economic development. It was a really good meeting. And I believe that same or variation of that presentation is gonna come before the EDA sometime in the near future. So we're gonna get that information to the Economic Development Advisory Committee and then also the EDA, so that we know where we're going from a more global perspective. Mr. McNeil, Chief Tate, myself, and a couple of officers, on the tenth of March, Saturday, went to Lusto Mundo Church and had a absolutely wonderful meeting in the basement. It was packed, how many people, a hundred people there at least? They served a phenomenal meal and asked lots and lots of questions. It was a great beginning. And they were very comfortable with asking questions and asked Chief Tate a lot of questions and just procedural things. How do we handle X if Y happens and things like that? So it was really good. And my five-year-old daughter came along and they entertained her the entire time, so I didn't have to, which was great. So that was good. Then I went to a ribbon cutting for the new Radio Shack that relocated within Shakopee over by Crossroads Liquor, that's my place in that building. I don't know what else is in there. But, so there's new Radio Shack in Shakopee. Then yesterday, the municipal legislative commission met with Governor Dayton for about an hour yesterday and we talked with him, it was a really good meeting. We talked about inverse condemnation, which is a bill that's in legislature right now, which would impact city's ability to collectively purchase garbage removal. And so, it's a fun one to talk about. But it, it basically puts, removes city's ability to do things and puts legislative, removes power and gives it to the legislature, which we don't like too much. And so that was one thing we talked about, an extension, eighteen-month extension to TIF, which doesn't affect us a ton. But then after the meeting, Mayor Janet Williams from Savage and I talked to the governor about the one-on-one bridge and how that's moving forward and how it is kind of, it's a little stalled out right now since the governor visited. And he wasn't aware that it was getting no momentum. And so, or he said he wasn't aware that it was getting no movement right now. And so we talked about that and he is going to push Met Council and get back to us as to actually what's going on because Met Council is balking at the fact that going from two lanes to four lanes would be an expansion of service outside their core area. So they're throwing some wrenches in there, so we're working on it. Then after Governor Dayton meeting, I testified in favor of Resino and talked about our council passing resolution supporting Resino and that the Resino bill sponsored by Senator Senjum did not make it out of committee. It lost eight to five in a frustrating display of leadership. It was sad. I was very frustrated when I left because there was no actual discussion and everybody was just adding amendments just to tick other people off and it was, it was not good. So that was Resino. And then with regards to the fire station art plan, they, I believe that they left a plan here, but we have it digitally. And could you please get it to all the councilors? The plan that they put together so far and their action plans for that. And then lastly, this Thursday is the Shakopee Diversity Summit. It's from six to eight here in city chambers. And it's just, like I said before, beginning the conversation about awareness of diversity in Shakopee. And so I invite council members to come, six o'clock, starting here. The first half hour is meet and greet and then second half hour is introductions. Third half hour is small group and, and talking about how we can all work together and make, move forward on things. And the last half hour is just lesson learned and coming back and presenting what's going on. So that is all I've got for there. Item thirteen, any other business?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, early in the meeting, Councilmember Whiting asked the difference between temporary and provisional. I've had a chance to look at the rules. The difference is that under a temporary appointment, you make, they actually make an appointment from the eligible list that's already been put together, but they haven't finished the process. But for whatever reason, they need to make an emergency appointment. So they make the appointment and they have to offer it to the person that's highest on the list and then they go down until somebody accepts it. The difference between what that one and the provisional is the provision where you don't even have an eligibility list yet, which is tonight, you've got, whatever Chris said, two hundred and eighty applications. And so you don't have a list. So you can still make a provisional appointment, but it is gonna be longer because they still have to go through the eligibility list, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that answers Councilmember Whiting's questions, I hope, happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Councilman Lehman?
Mr. Thompson, the provisional list also allows them to use an existing staff member that's already been through the background check process, which is why they went with a provisional instead of a temporary. Because a temporary typically would be somebody from the outside for an emergency situation and it hasn't gone through the background checking situation where provisional allows you to take an existing employee and put them there temporarily.
That's true, but in this case, they had to use provisional because there's no eligibility list. Temporary only can only come off the eligibility list.
Right, and the eligibility, eligibility list, folks haven't been through the backgrounding process.
All right.
And as long as I got the mic, I can't tell you how much I'm gonna miss Judy. She's very detail-oriented and I really enjoyed working with her.
Wonderful. Any other business? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, at six thirty at the Shakopee Public Utilities Building.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Councilor Whiting, second by Councilor Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned at eight forty-one.